Welcome everybody to July 12th Board Meeting. And first off, I'll say thank you to all the teachers, staff that came over to the commission meeting. We need y'all to support over there if we're gonna do the jobs. We need to, we need to, we need to fill our troops behind us. It's hard to find if your roots ain't right behind you. You gotta hear them. So, we ready?
You're called Rosa.
Call Rosa Curtis.
Mr. Fannin.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Up here.
Mr. Sanders. Ms. Walker. Chairman Daniel.
Here.
Chairman Daniel, you have three here, two absent. You do have a call on.
Okay. Number one, item number one approve the agenda. I hear motion approve the agenda.
I make the motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Okay, have Rosa, say that, call Rosa.
Motion Mr. Powers second by Mr. Fannin to approve the agenda for the July 12th 18th meeting. Mr. Fannin.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Chairman Daniel.
Aye.
Chairman Daniel, three ayes, none ayes.
Item number two approve the consent agenda. That's approved the minutes of June 14th and the June 26th, Board Meeting.
I make the motion we approve the consent agenda.
I second it. Call Rosa.
Motion, Mr. Powers second by Mr. Daniel to approve the minutes of the June 14th 2018, June 22nd 2018, School Board Meeting, or meetings of the Kennedy Board of Education. Mr. Fannin.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Chairman Daniel.
Aye.
Chairman Daniel, three ayes, none ayes.
Aye, item number three, Ms. Jane for the risk, address the board on the term of special education transportation agreement, run for committee.
Do you guys have any other questions about the transportation agreement? It's basically for Tennessee School to the line to transport our students beneath their services. We don't have buses and if it goes there, it's a contingent, but if Rutherford County has a bus going there, that they would, you know, let our students run. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I say that this is an agreement that is very, very similar to what we have had in the past with Rutherford County.
They did increase it a dollar, but I think that's worth it since they gave me that, but a dollar now.
So, this is basically the same thing we made on the, no, no change. I make the motion we approve the agreement for Rutherford County transportation.
Second.
Second, call Rosa.
Ms. Fannin.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Chairman Daniel.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, three ayes, none ayes.
Okay, now, do we wanna go ahead and take number five?
You can, or you can do number four if you want, do number four, whatever you'd like. Mr. Chairman, it's turning up to you, sir.
Get number five out of the way, not begin to come to that. Come to that. All right. We'll come back to hold, let me go over discussion. Doctor revise, follow policies, policy 3.600, policy 4.608, policy 5.203, policy 5.305, policy 5.802, policy 6.300, policy 6.314, policy 6.400. We'll go then eventually, we wanna do 70, I mean, altogether.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, you look at that, you've got your letter from TSBA that we sent out to you, Board Members, in regard to these, I will bring, bring in two others back to you in the August meeting, that we're not hardly ready for there, from the, from the letter from TSBA. These are revisions that were, that take state law that was passed in a vice legislative session, and then they, what they have done, they have adopted, TSBA has adopted model policy for year per usual, and we've done this in the past multiple times. There are two new policies, 4.608 and 5.203, that are brand new. The others are revisions of our current policy. Also, depending upon what happens in the next little bit, Ms. Bonnie Patterson, you have at your table, some revisions that she's done, the yellow, Ms. Pa, Ms. Bonnie, if you could come up just for a second, she can talk to you about what concerned her on these policy revisions, and that, that what you're looking at right now, you're seeing what has changed in, in those particular policies of, of those from, that has to do with her individual programs in safety, and also in attendance and discipline, so, Ms. Bonnie, I'll turn it. So, Mr. Chairman, you'd like to do that at this time?
Yeah.
It is really not concerns, I just wanted you to see the changes there, and I highlighted and add comments to the new policy, so you can just see the specific changes. Most of it's just wording. You see, you're eliminating a lot of verbiage that was there that was unnecessary, or it's adding some specific wording. If you'll look at the first one, 6.409, the child abuse and neglect, it added new language stating that...
Letter H.
Once a report is filed to DCS, a parent shall be verbally provided notification within 24 hours if the parent is not the perpetrator. So, that would be if we acknowledge that some type of abuse that was going on outside of the home, and we made a referral, then we, of course, which we would, but now it's in the light in the law that we would let the parent know. And basically, just some new wording there, and adding the term sexual abuse to the reporting, which is, wasn't there, but that was reported in the past, so that's 6.409. Under the, is there any question on that one? I had the old policy too, just highlighted things that were removed. On policy 6.309, zero tolerance offenses.
Letter F.
Some wording changing, changes on line three and four, they added the word unauthorized possession under firearms, under drugs, they added controlled substance analog, that would include fast assaults, those things that we're seeing kids bring in that can be bombing grocery stores sometimes. Under assault, they added or commits assault that results in bodily injury, not just aggravated assault. That language is added. And I did a little research on aggravated assault, what that consists of, and that of course, it's serious bodily injury, or having a weapon to commit serious bodily injury. It's kind of interesting when you go into the specifics of the law there. Any questions on that? It's just really getting specific to the day and age that we live in, especially under the drug section, not just controlled substances. Under corporal punishment, 6.314.
Letter G.
Just a wording change. Under that, the first line, any principal, assistant principal, or any teacher with the approval of the principal, that was added to the language. Under line nine and ten, well, line 10, they changed the word from offender to student to make it more friendly terms. They added line nine and six because of our special ed law now, the public chapter, that was added, which actually made, made this policy change, which is public chapter number 900.
And a lot of these are footnotes too, John, that are added that will cite either public chapter or Tennessee community. Mr. Powers, I did investigate what we talked about there, on number five, and they would advise against doing that, mainly because of the way the law read it, okay? So, they said you could do it, but you would probably not want to do it here, you might want to do somewhere else, but not here at this particular place. So, I did investigate that, and they were very nice, Mr. Chairman White was very good at the TSBA meetings.
And actually, that question you had will be taken care of under the procedures part of this, because we will develop procedures to give to our administrators that says that there has to be written permission in the file, but they have to be notified if under each test.
Each time, each incident.
Yes. And that was line 22 and 23 that was added to the law, that was not there in the past.
And those administrative procedures to implement the policy, we'll, we'll be talking about that at personal meetings, so personal's hear that, we'll be talking about that now. We're going to revise that as a, as a system.
We'll have to revise the document that we use. Any questions on that? On the, one more thing, on the child abuse, under the public chapter, we are required in the next school year, not this school year, the next school year is mandatory, you know, we have another compliance training on, for every staff member on recognizing child and sexual abuse. We're gonna go ahead and start that this year. We've done that like every two to three years, now we're including it every year. So, we'll be ahead of the game on that. Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
I want to press by a toddler, don't go over the one.
It's okay, we'll do the whole...
It is your mic, Mr. Powers.
Did you use it correctly?
I did, I did. I've learned a lot about government terms there.
Make motion we approve all eight of the policies. I second. Mr. Curtis, would you read policy number two, call Rosa.
Motion by Chairman Daniel second by Mr. Powers to approve policies as presented, policy 3.600, policy six, uh, 4.608, policy 5.203, policy 5.305, policy 5.802, policy 6.309, policy 6.314, and policy 6.409. Note, policy 4.608 and policy number 5.203 are new policies. Mr. Fannin.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Chairman Daniel.
Aye.
Chairman Daniel, three ayes, none ayes.
Okay, we'll go back up to item number four, Mr. Curtis, to take actual possibility of construction by his, by the field house. I think that being with Colin.
Charlie asked for the blocking lines, the lines. So, I met with the city today, and they showed me where the lines are, and that is the closest new spots I entered, so, it wasn't as far as we've been to slanters the last, wrap us out on one of the pumps, we're gonna plug it, and then tomorrow morning, we have our contract, my man's gonna pick that up, we're gonna present it Saturday, I should, that's what I'm saying. That's what we're talking about.
There was a... It's the center building.
That is a, a manhole cover, and the center of our field is a manhole.
Is there any way, Colin, get me my name, Mr. Chairman, is there any way we could get that covered with sod or something, that you don't have a manhole cover over some field?
We can't cover the sod.
Or could we cover that, though?
The one thing that we found so far is a little one.
I think we're probably the only field of the upper cover that I know of that has a sewer cap in the lower field.
Okay, it's not open. It's a tin inch.
I, I could do some checking, we may be the only one in the state who has a sewer cover. Baseball folks back there could probably testify, that was apparently a baseball player, I, I have concerns about that.
I mean, I play here, and I hit it three times.
I understand.
Because you play in Little Cleetz, Little, still, manhole covers.
That's a liability, because I played over at Manchester, and they had a drain grate in Little Cleetz.
There's a few, there's a few places with drain grates that I've never seen one.
We might investigate that, Colin, to, to, to help, any way we can help to do that. The office, there's kind of something in there about that.
Where we built it for us, it's when it used to be above the rest level, but now it's lower, so it's a better than what it was.
To give us an advantage, if we can get to that, that manhole cover guy, so there are left, we can get to the manhole covers.
Guess what we talked about, the day was the concrete, so.
This is for your later, so where's your silver?
Those two, there's one, there's one, twelve, there's a second, take whichever one is closer. There's a tin inch line, I go straight through, right there, and do whichever side. What they said it was?
Not the city, not the county.
No, they just told me it was about five dollars a foot, so, that was.
It takes a tax, so.
Yeah, they said it was about four hundred dollars, so, we, we, we're pushing five thousand. Material bricks was, they're gonna give us thirty dollars. We got more bids today on pipe issue, we got one.
Have you got all that information with you, the labor?
No, I, I didn't, I didn't. The labor, we got a twelve thousand dollar bid today. The concrete bid was fourteen four, that was like the second one before.
That was with discount forms.
That is not going through, so, or ready, because they got laid out, budget, plan, but they can ride, score, they can ride, install floors.
Concrete cover, that's for forty for that.
Indulgence. That was reported concrete.
That's been, that overdid finish, the concrete is sale.
And fourteen four was for further stuff, concrete.
And he had two of the bids on, Colin, he had two of the bids on, considering that okay.
One is a refinish, and one's a spoof finish.
Which would you prefer, the coach?
That's my favorite question.
That was from the local chairman.
They said they're gonna, we're putting on the gas. They're bid, they give us, that cover construction gives, theirs, that was also, if they were done.
This is a bad building, also bad, and pressed bad.
It's all grown out of sand.
So, this, we, will we put all this here, will we put it on the, that we have?
Anything other than straight mark? All right. Consent, so, we've got a, 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 a,[1304.12] Because we're putting it close to the first.
That's all we're in for, then. And then he had additional funding. You might want to reiterate it to funding or that you had column here.
So we have pledge donations. We're closer to the thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand dollar range. So we will cover everything by donation fundraising. But donations, they don't want, pledges donations until it's approved. To begin with.
So would you need his permission and vote in that for one hundred dollars? The voter, isn't that ready?
Yes, the county needs it.
And that would be contingent upon the action of the county commission on Saturday. We'll probably put that in the form of a motion, a part of that motion. That this is contingent upon the county commission acting, acting upon that. Then he can bring it back to us. Uh, I was having a conversation a few months ago with the, with the, uh, chairman of the budget committee. And he would like for us to go back and read, to readize our numbers and bring them back. But that would be revised under the certain thing. We would probably need to do a special call meeting at some point to do that before we go back over there. So we can come back over there any moment. So we're gonna act, to make it long story short, we're gonna have to meet again sometime between now and next school week. Probably tell them before they go before the, before they, they'll make a recommendation to go before the county commission to approve the budget. They're not gonna do that until the bid on this. That's why I was talking a few months ago. He's got his bids.
We think that this budget, there we will be out.
Been down the limits since we are past July one. Yes, sir. Correct, members. Since we're after past July one, this is, this is in the new, here's the budget. Then capital outlay, we probably have over that way. In capital outlay, yes, sir. Answer that question, I can answer that one. Yes, we could. Y'all know my heart, y'all know my heart, if I can speak through your distribution. Y'all know my heart, I baseball my sport. And I'm, I'm a baseball guy. But we could, we could look at that and say, is this a normal and customary? That would be the argument. And, and normal and customary, capital outlay is part of the operational, if you take money out of capital. Okay.
And, and we'll have that Saturday taken care of, transferred that property. Then, correct, you've got the designated donations, which, once somebody says they're gonna donate something, by law, I mean, you can be mean and go after them and get it. Seriously, because I don't let people, you know, they, they back out, they drive away. I wouldn't chase them back.
But I think they're pretty, they're solid on their donation, once this is approved, they're solid. Just have the bank, that's what.
Well, we, we had, if you talk about that, because we had, we, we had, we count around, like, we had a budget three twenty-one, am I right? And we actually spent two forty-nine. That's almost due to, to July third. Since we missed July third. Real capital outlay is seventy-six one hundred. Am I right? So we budgeted three hundred and forty-one thousand, we actually spent two hundred and forty-nine thousand.
That's the figures that I'd see too, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
That's the figures that I'd saw also solid there, Mr. Chairman.
Four five thousand, I can relate fifty, that's not like fifty-two. We certainly know way through that twenty-five thousand. We're, we're a long ways right here with the donation.
Were you calling this project? What's the name of it?
We got that meeting Monday and Tuesday.
Right, but that is a, just a, a workshop, a meeting there, that business could be conducted in an hour shop. Uh, that, that'd get me out of the five-day violation. It seems we added something to do to get, hardly do that, all that. Uh, but like I say, I'm for this project, I think it's lawful to do. And, um, I think it would be incredibly important with, with a, with a community partner wanting to do this, to take advantage of that and to, to put this thing forward.
And you got a good group of, uh, good baseball team group, built by the people all up here. But, the, the timing, everybody, because we just, a lot of us were here over at the courthouse just a few minutes ago. Those people wouldn't look, uh, nicely upon us, no matter how much spending. They're talking about cutting our proposed budget. Got some, uh. But I, I'd love to, I agree my definition of capital outlay. I mean, something that's, that's usual, that you do. Right. Because if you don't clear off the building, the sports building. Out of that. What you're saying right now, with just that continuous budget, it wouldn't be custom, it's not a customary thing. As they shake it around, I wouldn't mind waiting another month.
What I would suggest is to authorize, uh, once we get contingent upon funding, you could do that, is authorize him to proceed with the project.
Mr. Ja, Ja, thinking out.
I'm trying to write and figure.
Well, because we, Mr. Daniel might want to add. Yeah.
Clear as water, sir.
Mr. Davis, I'm just thinking out that motion to allow a baseball program to continue with baseball facility allowed that the county leases the school system, the field Saturday. And then as soon as the new budget is approved. As soon, because that last, that, as the new budget is approved, we cover.
That's, that's exactly right, that's exactly right, Mr. Chairman. How'd you run against your office, really?
Would the commissioners use that against us? You know, because they'll say, they always, they always spend money.
They don't think they've approved us to do that, so. Hey, we're, we're taking it off of the, is what we're doing, that's all we're offering, the county, we appreciate it.
I think, I can hear him saying, we're in the business of educating children, we deserve that. Yep.
We're teaching our little baseball.
We're providing the physical activity which strengthens the brain, which brings about more academic success.
Life lessons on the work.
You make a motion.
I want to vote for this, sir. I'll make a motion to allow a baseball program to continue with the baseball facility, allowing that the county leases the school system to field. As soon as a new budget is approved, the school board will provide fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for concrete work.
That's motion.
That's my motive.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Chairman, by Mr. Fan, suggested by Chairman Daniel. To allow a baseball program to continue with the baseball facility, allowing that the county, allowing that the county leases the school system, the field, as soon as a new budget is approved. School board providing fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for concrete work.
Do, do we need to add anything to it that, that, that's just a small part of the whole overall project? So that it looks better to the, I mean, I'm not, I don't know if people see it, they're putting most of the effort into it, we're just providing a little.
It's always concrete.
Right, so that no, they can't come against us and say, hey, you're, you're building a facility, we're really just doing a small part. They can research that.
It says low grade.
Are you, are you like to amend that, or you like to change your motion, Mr. Fan?
No, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking out loud, it's a good motion, if people can ask questions, if they have any questions, but I'm just like.
You could, you could add the total cost there as, as part of that.
Or a part of the total cost.
Approximately cost of forty-five thousand dollars, which could, if you so desire.
If it goes all.
So motion stands to allow baseball program to continue with baseball facility, allowing that the county leases the school system, the field, as soon as a new budget is approved. School board providing fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for concrete work. Motion been made by Mr. Fan, suggested by Mr. Daniel. Mr. Fan? Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Chair Daniel?
Aye.
Chairman, three ayes or none of these?
That's work cut out.
Well, I'll, I'll put it, I'll, he'll make it official, but that's okay.
Put that, put that up.
I guess I'll put it here right here, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We've moved on to number six, safety board, thank you for covering that, give us that. Number seven, director's comments.
Well, Chairman, I appreciate everyone being here tonight. Baseball is a big part of, of my heart, the baseball team does that, I support the baseball team, and I appreciate the board doing that. Again, lawful to do, and, and I appreciate all of my parents and my, look out and see my former students there, and this is an exercise in government, so Curtis is still teaching you guys, okay? Uh, but let me just tell them, I, I appreciate their efforts and doing this, and Colin's efforts, a lot of hard work's going into it, and, and I appreciate that very much. Speaking of hard work, uh, gentlemen, you have in front of you a contract that is for the multi, multi-sport mower, lawnmower, which baseball will possibly be recipient of that, as well as, as, as softball, and baseball, and girls soccer, and football, and, and, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your generous donation. I go on record, I thank you for doing your company, for, for doing that. You have the contract, you've already voted, so this is the contract that you asked me to, according to the minutes of the last board meeting, uh, gentlemen, that, I, that was put together. This has been approved by the board attorney, there have been two or three different revisions. I sent you an old revision, and I apologize for that. There was another revision sent that I didn't know about, so, so it was on me, but, uh, you see the revision there that was made, uh, Mr. Fan made of that, that revision, that all school board members present, I added the word present there. Voted for, disagreed, voted yes to disagree with, so Mr. Fan, I appreciate you correcting us on that. And then there was another one, if you went down, uh, you see the equipment, one, two, three, four, there was another phrase on this, in this revision, and this is the correct one, uh, that, that was added by Huth and Puff Trucking, uh, the advertising rights, and, and, uh, it, it will have the right to designate where each sign is placed. The place will be, not be changed without the approval of Huth and Puff Trucking Company, and change will be located at, at place or places designated by Huth and Puff Trucking. So that was added, uh, by the attorneys, uh, to do that, and all it says is basically, we can, they can place it where they think it's appropriate and, and will be used, and, and this is, this contract goes through, uh, twenty twenty-three, August first, twenty twenty-three, so, uh, and then also wanted to make you aware of, and, uh, Coach Daniel, if you come up, uh, make you aware of that, uh, other things were done besides the mower, the trimmers were purchased. Every sport, uh, outdoor sport has contributed to this project. So it was a community effort, uh, to do that, Coach Daniel can, can speak more about that. Um, they're going, we're going to work, Principal Nichols is here also, I'll be recognized in just a moment, but Principal Nichols is here, and we've talked about utilizing our carpentry class and the, uh, mechanics, uh, mechanics class, doing that as a cooperative effort, a joint venture by those two classes to build the building. Which will save us funding there, and those funds will be provided, so I appreciate the hard work, and this is everybody working together. When I look back and I see football sitting beside, beside, uh, our baseball program, and, and Coach Lockhart, our soccer coach, everybody working together. And to me, I want to compliment you on doing that, and it's, it's, and, and that comes with getting everybody on the same team. And I hope we're giving a good example to these young men here tonight, so thank you, Coach Daniel, and Principal Nichols, and, and, and Coach Jones for doing that, because they've used, gentlemen, they've used their own mowers. They've used their own mowers to do this mowing that needs to be done, so I want to go public record thanking them for doing that. And, uh, our parents, volunteers, and, and this way, we've got our own equipment, we don't have to hire it out, we're not doing, those guys can do it, and we'll use, utilize it appropriately, and, and there's, there's, there's wordage in this where it is gonna be used appropriately, so thank you so much, Coach, Coach Daniel.
Uh, Mr. Eric, Mr. Curtis said about the additional fund of twelve hundred seventy-seven dollars, that was collective effort by all of the sports, out, outdoor sports, middle school and high school, to get the rest of that funding for the additional trimmers, and the additional cost of eight ninety-nine for the rest of the mowing. So, uh, all of those gladly discredited, there was no, um, debate or anything like that, they gladly came together.
So I appreciate that, and I appreciate that, Coach Daniel. And gentlemen, you can look at there, the signatures are there, we're fixing to sign that here.
Why don't you bring up the contract?
Yeah, I'd be glad to bring the contract for the minutes, and this will go in the minutes, for this, this is what we've negotiated and you voted on at the June meeting. Huth and Puff Trucking will donate ten thousand dollars toward the purchase of a lawnmower in return for advertising rights for the next five years, see details below. This agreement between Huth and Puff Trucking Incorporated and Cannon County Schools began on July twelfth, twenty twenty-eight, and will expire on August first, twenty twenty-three. This agreement was approved on July twelfth by the Cannon County School Board. The minutes of that meeting officially recorded, and, that officially recorded, that all school board members present voted yes to this agreement, and that school board personnel listed on this agreement would be the custodians of the equipment, and ensure that Huth and Puff Trucking advertising signs currently in place would remain for the five-year period. And while there is a typo there, I'll break that. It says that July twelfth, it should say that June twelfth in the meeting, and I look at the minutes to verify that date, which it should have said that is approved at the June fourteenth meeting. If you don't mind, I'll strip that out and clarify that, if anybody's okay with that. The members you, okay, okay, let's strike it June twelfth, put it June fourteenth. Twenty eighteen, y'all okay with that? All right, thank you. Let me continue, purpose, to provide a machine and facility that will, can provide outstanding performance for athletic fields at the high school and baseball complex for Cannon County sports. These sports include football, baseball, softball, girls and boys in soccer, and their respective middle school programs. Equipment, number one, commercial-grade mower, turf tiger two scag, sixty-one inch, thirty-seven horsepower, valued at ten thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. Two, commercial-grade trimmers, Echo SRM dash two-two-five trimmer, at one hundred eighty-nine dollars times two. Three, total cost eleven thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars. Four, ten thousand dollars from Huth and Puff, one thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars provided by outdoor sports. This donation will provide years and years of service for athletic programs, and help maintain our athletic fields as safe places for practice and competition. In return for the donation, Huth and Puff Trucking will have advertising rights until August first, twenty twenty-three, at any outdoor sports affiliate with Cannon County Public Schools. Huth and Puff Trucking Incorporated will have right just, uh, to designate which, where each sign will be placed. This placement shall not be changed without the approval of Huth and Puff Trucking Company Incorporated, and it change will be relocated at a place or places designated by Huth and Puff Trucking Company Incorporated. Use, the facility and machines would have limited use to the sports and the designated coaches from these sports. The direct custodians of the equipment will be Coach Matt Daniel, football, and Coach Colin Jones, baseball, in a joint effort to preserve the life of the mower and equipment. Coaches approved by Coach Daniel and Coach Jones would check out the equipment for use and keep adequate records of use. This will cut down a number of users and help maintain maintenance records in order to prolong the life of the equipment. Matt Cagle, Athletic Director, Cannon County High School, and Courtney Nichols, Principal, Cannon County High School, will be given an annual report of upkeep and maintenance records to ensure that the equipment is being properly maintained. Support, each team will support the maintenance of the mower, building, built by career in technical class all twenty eighteen, and trimmers. This includes providing fuel, fuel containers, hydraulic oil, motor oil, trimming line, and repairs. No one without proper training should perform maintenance on any of the items listed unless they gain prior approval from Coach Daniel, Coach Jones, Athletic Director Matt Cagle, or Principal Nichols. Reason, currently the fields are being cut by volunteers with personal mowers, with most receiving no reimbursement for their efforts. To hire the services of the commercial lawn service would cost over two hundred and fifty dollars per cut for the football fields and softball fields alone per week. Most of these fields need to be mowed two to three times per week, fifteen thousand dollars per year alone. This is a binding contract between Cannon County Public Schools, Cannon County Outdoor Sports, and Huth and Puff Trucking for the next five years, from July twelfth, twenty eighteen, to August one, twenty twenty-three, inclusive. The contract allows Huth and Puff Trucking full, five, four years of advertising rights at all outdoor sporting events sponsored by the Cannon County Public Schools, which include football, baseball, softball, girls and boys soccer, and their respective middle school programs. And you have the signatures of my sub-director of schools, Mr. Nichols, principal of high school, Matt Cagle, Athletic Director, Cannon County High School, Matt Daniel, head football coach, Colin Jones, head baseball coach, Bruce Daniel, president and CEO of Huth and Puff Trucking, and two witnesses. If you're Catholic, it is. Any additional questions right then, Mr. Chairman?
No, is there a best ending?
We will, we will sign, we will sign. After, right after the meeting, we will sign. We have everybody here, but Mr. Cagle. Also, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so that, that, uh, contract, and while I do scan that, we'll get y'all a copy, one of the members' copy of that for your use. Additionally, Mr. Nichols, stand please. Mr. Courtney Nichols has been recently named to be the Principal of Cannon County High School. Mr. Nichols is charged, I think you heard that charge from the county commission a few moments ago, so. Mr. Nichols, if you'd like to say something to, uh, to report tonight, we're very happy to have you moving from the sixteen-year-old to the chief administrative official at Cannon County High School.
I'd just like to say thank you again, it's just exciting, it's very exciting to see the, uh, school board and Cannon County High School working together along with Cannon County Schools. I mean, you can just feel the excitement, I just, I, um, this change in the air, I mean, you can just smell that great, uh, breath of fresh air that's here, and we're just excited to get started with the school year, and, you know, this new facility that we're getting for our baseball players and the new mower, just, I mean, there's a lot of great changes going on here, and we're just excited, and, you know, our goal is to make our students college and career-ready when they leave Cannon County High School, that's our main goal.
They've also tried to revise my E three to E four, and, Mr. Nichols, you might want to say what the E four is, I think that's, Miss, Miss, uh, Lewis is sitting there at the side of you, so I think she may have, uh, had a little algebraic, algebraic expression here, all exponential.
And I will tell you this really quick, that we had a, uh, I called out for a leadership team meeting with all the faculty at Cannon County High School, and just asked if they wanted to be a part of the leadership team. Right now, we currently have thirty-five members on staff, uh, on staff, I still have five positions to fill. We had twenty-five teachers show up at our, at our leadership team meetings, that's exciting. These, these teachers are ready, and they're ready to go, and they're ready to hit it day one. Uh, so one of the things that we've come up with, uh, Mr. Curtis's big slogan is, uh, E three, engaging in educational excellence. We decided to step it up one more, one notch and say, engaging in educational excellence every day.
I don't say this softly, but thank you for one of them being there. I'm proud of that, I really am. Uh, so we, that's quality, the instructors we have there, we, Mr. Nichols alluded to it, we have several open positions, not only at Cannon County High School, but across the district that we're working to fill. Uh, we have two instruction, uh, instructional coaches, Dr. Melton is working on interviews with those physicians right now, as the instructional coach interviews are going on, so a lot of happenings, a lot of excitement, as, as Mr. Nichols alluded to there, so I appreciate everybody's cooperation and moving us forward, and that's what we're looking at, is, is forward, and we're looking for results. And our principals who were there tonight, and, and were at the board, were at the, uh, county commission, I really appreciate that some are on vacation, uh, that are enjoying a few more days before it starts back. Uh, the next time, you know, when we look at the next regular session of school already started, it's unbelievable to me, but we'll be, we'll be doing that, so a lot of hard work's going on, you have your financial report in your packet. Uh, that's been worked on, does, we're still crunching numbers on, on the final financial report for twenty seventeen, twenty-eight. So, the twenty-third, July twenty-third, we'll, we'll be here to close this out, and you will get, we know about, but, but until, until Mr. Brownlinian comes through and does that, then we will have everything else, but, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to be director of schools, and as we look forward to being, engaging in educational excellence every day. The board workshop, the, uh, the, will be the sixteenth and seventeenth, five thirty each evening for dinner, I did verify that time, it is five thirty. Dinner will begin at five thirty, supervisors will be here, supervisors will be here, and will be there with us, so that's at the Greatness Factory. Uh, Mr. Michael Burke has offered the use of that facility at no charge, so we're appreciative of Mr., of Mr. Burke, Michael Burke, doing that, and we'll see each other there. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have one point of privilege I'd like to recognize, sir. I'd like Dr. Regina Merriman to stand at this time. This will be Dr. Merriman's last regular school board meeting with us. She has given us forty years of outstanding service at Woodbury Grammar and the Central Office, and an incredible hard worker, an A-plus individual that gets on, give me her a grade tonight as the director, I can do that, director's privilege. She has given us forty years of outstanding service at Woodbury Grammar and the Central Office, and an incredible hard worker, an A-plus individual that gets on, give her a grade tonight as the director, I could do that, director's privilege. But she was a B, slapped us right out, I'm sorry, just... But yes, an outstanding educator over the years, forty years of service to this Cannon County community, not taught anywhere else, have you, Regina? All Cannon County, forty years, and I think tonight, and I don't know about procedural, I'm the government teacher, maybe I'll do that, but I want to like everybody just to stand up and give her a round of applause. But I thank you for that point of privilege, Regina's a personal friend, and I, I thank Regina for not only her years of service, that the, uh, the office will be different. It will be different, uh, it might be a little quiet, I didn't say that, didn't say, didn't allude to that. But Regina and I are very similar about our A-plus personalities there, and, uh, we are definitely that, but thank you, Regina, I appreciate your efforts for students of Cannon County, and, you know, I did talk about the pre-K program, she got that off the ground. I mean, from, from day one, she's the, been the only pre-K director we've ever had since the inception of pre-K. I'd like to challenge anybody, probably the upper coming, who can say that. And so, thank you, uh, Regina, for all you've done. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, uh, thank you, board members, for everything you do for your students. Next regular session will be on Tuesday, August seventh, but, uh, if we were to, if we were to have a special call session, we would have a five-day notice, we'd give it to the newspaper and the radio, and keep, so we would, we would definitely, we would do that, and give that upon our getting notice, and I will get notice to, to you guys, so we have a special call meeting dealing with budget only, will be the, the only flavor, they're talking across the street, which y'all are there for. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.